I would like to call the board of the meeting to a place, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised in the event of a fire emergency and alarm will sound. Please note all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request please turn your cell phones to silence and thank you for your cooperation. At this time, I would like to administer the oath to our elected school board member, Mike Belenek. Mike, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I am Mike Belenek, do solemnly swear.
I am Mike Belenek, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of board member.
The duties of the office of board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, as this is the new year, uh, school year begins with this meeting, uh, we will need to vote on the president. Uh, do I have a nomination for a president?
Christopher Richter. I nominate Christopher Richter.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Liz Dietrich.
All in favor of Chris Richter?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I did.
Alright, so we don't have a president, so we can now, we can no longer have resolutions for this evening, so we can do just business items where it doesn't require a vote.
Should I run for vice president?
No, actually, no, we have to go back to president with Liz Dietrich. So that was the second nomination.
You have to vote for Liz.
They're all.
Okay, oh, okay. Uh, do I have a nomination for Liz Dietrich for president?
Yes, Mike.
Only a nomination.
Any opposed?
Done, so all those in favor.
All those in favor of Liz?
Aye.
And any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Alright, so we have a president being, so we will move this to the next meeting and we'll just simply get to the business items of the meeting.
We should run, well, we should run the meeting. Do we appoint a vice president without a president?
You can do a vice president and they can run the meeting tonight.
Why do that?
The nominations.
I nominate Liz Dahl for vice president.
And are there any other nominations for a vice president?
I'll nominate Mike Belenek.
Okay. All those in favor of Liz Dahl for vice president?
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. All those, so this three two?
Yep.
All in favor of Liz Dietrich?
Okay, no. Mike Belenek, all those in favor of Mike Belenek for vice president?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so now we just get to the business of the meetings and I'll run the meeting. After the board. Alright, so for consent agenda items. Uh, let's see. Patrick Sue. Let's make sure I do my oath first.
Okay, do you have, okay, you're gonna take it.
Yeah, I'll take.
Do I do that now?
Yes.
Okay. I, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Robert Malasani, do solemnly swear.
I, Robert Malasani, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of superintendent of schools.
The duties of the office of superintendent of schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities. Sue, about two years.
What's that?
You're gonna take a vote out.
Do you mind? Oh, okay, oh.
Okay, Sue, if you could raise your right hand. I, Sue Booth, do solemnly swear.
I, Sue Booth, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of district clerk.
The duties of the office of district clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So with respects to the next additions and so forth, consent agenda, all the additions require a board resolution, so I'm gonna table all of those. They were new for this evening. So we do have correspondence as listed and there's honor rolls and so forth in the board pack and backup notes for you to review. And I think we have some points of pride.
What Pedro's on the agenda, do you know offhand?
What's that? It's in the backup, backup note seven one.
Thank you.
So points of pride, let me start. The middle school, high school is excited to announce their second semester champion awards for the 2023-2024 school year. Olivia Amoriz, Lily Clement, Maggie Schumacher, Grayson Towery, and Chloe Warner.
Congratulations to senior center fielder, Melina Bellows, who is named fourth team all-state for Class C softball.
Match day of 2024 where the incoming seniors, the incoming sixth graders meet up for the mentor program. It has started for the upcoming school year and we're very excited to transition the fifth graders into life as middle school and high school students.
And congratulations to the class of 2024 and their families and wishing them well in their future endeavors.
Alright, so next is guests of the board. We have the Greater Wheatland Association Chamber of Commerce. We have Vice President Mark Turner and President Lisa Watson. And Mark, take it away.
Thank you. Good evening. I got just a few slides up here. Gonna be mindful of your time, just as way of introduction. I live up in the town of Wheatland, just outside of Scottsville. Been there for forty years. Very passionate about the community. I was founder of the Athletic Association there and I was on that board for nineteen years. I ran the soccer program for ten years and at that time, there wasn't a lot of girls soccer program down here, so we had a lot of Calhoun girls come up there, so that was, that was nice. I also was the chairman of the Wheatland Recreation Commission for eighteen years and ran that basketball program for fourteen, so a lot of community passion. And on my business life, I was an executive, engineering executive at Harris Corporation, which is now L3 Harris. Ran an operation of almost seventy million dollars a year in engineering. And so as I retired, instead of just playing golf, which I do a lot, was to, how can I merge those two things, the passion of community and business? And so part of that was helping out the town of Wheatland Municipality and then with the, it's now the GWB Chamber of Commerce. So I'm gonna tell you about a little bit about who we are and why we're here. If you go just back before, thanks for, just, I wanted to mention one thing. So why are we here really? Is if you look at that slide, it's a little hard to see, but it shows a wheel there with municipal, school, or town and village municipalities, school systems, and the businesses. And really, that's three of the four legs that make up our community. Residents are the other one. And so what we're looking to do is have discussions, make sure folks know what we're doing with the business community, helping out the citizens of our communities also. Looking for, you know, potentially maybe there's some goal alignment that we can, we can do. We're small, right? If we don't work together, we, we run into trouble. But we take that plus really to help drive success and community engagement, working, working together. So that's what we're here to share. So yes, I can go ahead now. Thank you. So what are we? We're driven by businesses. We're driven by memberships. We are not an advertising organization. Can't do that as a trade association. We are a not-for-profit corporation. We're in the process of getting our tax exempt with the federal government, which would be a 501(c)(6) organization. This organization's been around for a while. It has evolved. And if you look at that lower left corner of that screen, you'll see the region that we're covering today. And so it's focused primarily on Wheatland and Caledonia, and now we've had some larger presence from Leroy also. We look at this region, something that we've done, I hope that you'll all get to hear more about that, is we branded this area as the gateway to the Jesse country, to separate ourselves from Rochester. And really, that region, as you leave Rochester, you head south, you get this beautiful country experience, and that's where we live. And that really, that proceeds all the way down the Jesse Valley. But we're that, that top end that represents, that so many people come and see with all these, you know, wonderful amenities that we have, you know, with the creeks and the Jesse Country Village Museum, Stokie Farms, and others, many others. And so that is the region that we're, that we're talking about, looking to support. And, you know, why is that, you know, a broader reach? It's the same, same reason. You need some scale to be able to provide services and capabilities that our businesses need in this area. I won't go through all the value proposition. The key things here are, we're really trying to help business success, economic development. We are the, the leader and prime sponsor of a Jesse Valley Trail Town Initiative grant in the town of Wheatland. We actually got the largest grant of ten towns participating in the Jesse Valley region. So we're very excited about that, to be the leader of that activity. We do wanna promote business. We wanna increase the visibility of our region, because one of the ways we sustain our businesses, it's hard to do with just our residents in small communities, you know, not here, just here, but everywhere across the US. You do that by, by having some visitors and bringing some dollars in from the outside, et cetera. So working on that visibility and helping us do that. Advocacy is something that we, will stand up for our businesses. And what do they need? We can come here, we can share. You know, these are what the businesses need, and we wanna hear back, what you folks need from, from businesses also. So that's important. So we can go ahead to the next slide. And this is the heart of the map of what we're, what we're doing today. So this will be new to most, to most folks. So I said, we are a not-for-profit. We've gone through a rebranding to represent that broader region. We do have a strategic plan in place. It was put in by the Board of Directors for the chamber, including our leadership members. That was something new that we did. We have some members who, who participated at a higher level financially and also by advocating for things that they, that they need and they see, and so they're part of that activity. We have friends, so friends are folks that are, they're really contributory memberships as individuals, but they can be part of it and access all of our content and information. And something new, we've just started some sponsorships, you know, to help us be able to do a little more. And we'll talk about some of the things we do here specifically. I talked about advocacy. Part of these meetings that we're having right here with leadership, we met with the town of Wheatland Municipality, the village, the school. Now we're here at the school. We're looking to go onto the municipalities and share the same, same information and hear back, start that dialogue. So one of the things that we've done recently, you'll see that little yellow blob there on the right-hand side, as a way to promote our region and businesses. We've come up with something that some of our businesses are sponsoring. It's called the Chamber Goal Cards, and I'm gonna give some of those out. These have some QR codes, and if you look at the back in particular, they address and allow you to access content that we've got on our website. There's a list of one hundred and forty businesses that serve our care. There's a list of our, our membership, the headlines, and what those members are up to and what they're, what they're doing.
Thank you.
And I've got a couple more for folks who aren't here. Can I give some to you?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, there's also a kind of a really neat thing. One of the things we wanna do with the chambers, connect businesses and communities, so to help, you know, not just the municipalities, but the residents and things. And so to do that, there is a, a nice community connections thing here where you can go in, you can see where, how to get ahold of the Boy Scouts, or how to get ahold of the American Legion, or those kinds of things, so they're all accessible there. And then finally, we also have this thing called a community guide. Sorry I don't have a copy of that, but if you look down the lower right-hand quarter, you can see, yeah, there, thank you. This is something we started last year. The chamber partnered with Featured Media, the Penny Saver folks out of Avon. And you've seen these guides from other communities like Naples or the Canada Dayway area, et cetera. And so this was our, for the gateway to the Jesse community. So we did that. We dropped four thousand of these in our community, and it's also, there's electronic copy up on the, our website that you can go look at through this QR code. It talks about businesses, so there's advertising in there, but it also talks about the region. It talks about our parks. It talks about our amenities and other things. So it's, it's about our whole community in terms of sharing, sharing that for visitors and residents. And so we're right now in the process of working on year two of that. Let's see. We do networking things with our businesses. Again, connecting is a big part of what we can do. We have regional partnerships, so we are a member of the Livingston County Chamber as an affiliate, so we have access to some of their content that we share with our, with our members and others, and that's really through mostly educational kinds of things, webinars, et cetera. We're also a partner with the Letchworth Gateway Villages, who's a spearhead of the Jesse Valley Trail Town Initiative, helping visitors through our whole region. We also are sponsoring the Wheatland Community Hall of Fame, which is something that started in the town of Wheatland Municipality, and we've taken that over a couple of years ago. Where we recognize, it's really for citizen recognition. So we recognize that those who make a big impact change the direction of our communities, literally. So there's a few of those. And then there's also a great list of volunteers. We call them, it's dedicated to excellence, so we have these volunteers. So we wanna get as many of those as we can, because they all contribute and they make a big difference in our communities. So we recognize those. Scholarship programs, most of you probably know, we do give a scholarship to a Calmong senior graduating each year. We also do that in Wheatland Childline. And so with that, I think we've covered most of those other things. The business directory, if you have a chance, take a look at that. It's pretty handy. You can go out there, they're categorized, these hundred and forty businesses, so if you're interested in something, you can find it pretty quickly and get access to those. And our members get premium listings that, nice little graphic, and we try to promote our members a little bit too. So if we can go on to the end here, so that's, that's the gist of who we are and what we're doing. And this is a list of our members. We have three sponsor members, so they've contributed a good amount for us to help us do the things that we wanna do, execute our programs. And there's a list of our members, so I won't dwell on those, but we have a good list of growing members in this community and the surrounding communities that I shared. And we also have a few nice friends that have helped us out. I'd be glad to entertain any quick questions, but I know we're on, out of time schedule here. I do appreciate the opportunity to come and, and share the, the mission and what we're doing in the chamber, and I'd love to come back and tell you more in the future, and I'd love to hear, hear more from the board as you think about how you wanna engage business and what can we do, you know, collectively to help.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for the board? Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, thank you for your time. Basically, we're doing this, and another aspect too, is we'd love to be able to have a semi-annual meeting with some of the municipalities and the schools with us in what your needs are, if we can do more with the school. We're hoping to raise more money for scholarships. We're hoping to be able to have some of our business owners come in and speak to the students. I know that you have a teacher that does that on Fridays. I think it's wonderful. But that's what our goal is, is for Wheatland and Caledonia to have a little more blend with the leaderships.
Wonderful.
But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Smither.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, thank you.
Okay, so we are now moving to new business, just because the others required again a resolution and passing. So under new, the new business Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act, AHRA, so in your board package, you have a six-month review. You know, of that six-month review, if you recall, I actually did a couple of emergency projects recently that identified those areas having asbestos and so forth. So right now, our, our systems and building and facilities are in good shape. We actually have our Capitol update project, which was supposed to be adopted tonight. We adopt it hopefully soon. They want the board to elect a president, for that matter, so that we can do their work over the summer before kids have to come back, so they're not, you know, around asbestos or the removal of asbestos, per se.
This is in July ninth, they won't be, I'm asking you, they won't be able to start work until the second Wednesday in August?
No, we're gonna have to conduct business. We're gonna talk with the other two members to see when we can get back in action, so we can elect a president, so we can conduct the students' business, the community's business. We're not gonna be late. Plus, we have teachers that we were ready to hire tonight. Hopefully, you know, our goal is to get them hired ASAP. So I'll be speaking with the two that are not here, try and get a meeting as soon as possible. So any questions regarding that AHRA plan, that plan, it's always posted on our website for people to review. All that information's there. Alright, so we have to skip number two. Number three, review of the average daily attendance. This is per board policy seventy-one ten. We have to share with you the average daily attendance. We break it up between the elementary school and then high school. You can see our overall average is ninety-four point five six percent, which is just a hair lower than where we were last year, but fairly well. Any questions regarding that? Jeremy, do you know, is there a deadline for setting the tax levy limit?
No, not my hat on.
Okay. So next up will be middle and high school student performance report, and as I shared with you also tonight, you have the Regents exams Friday. Thank you, Dr. Chanel.
Absolutely. I'll start with the local data. When I opened up that board agenda today, I did see that you all had access to the local data. Did you see Regents data in there, although it was provided? So I made copies of that and brought them to you this evening, and I'll talk through some of the highlights of those as well. In terms of our, our, I guess what I will start with is just in general, all of our programs pre-K through twelve are actually in the service of graduation. So I wanna just take a moment and celebrate for a moment that we had a one-hundred percent graduation rate with the class of twenty-twenty-four. That is not an easy feat. So I just wanna say thank you to every faculty member and every staff member, because it takes everybody from our bus drivers, our cafeteria workers, our cleaners, our maintenance folks, like everybody in this building, helps kids keep going on days when they don't want to. And so the class of twenty-twenty-four had some grit to it. We were happy to celebrate them, but it is, it doesn't go unnoticed that it takes the entire village to get that done. So congratulations to all of us on a hundred percent graduation rate. So when you're looking at the local final exams, a couple of things of note would just be that when we are looking at exams last year, if you all recall, last year was the, the last year that the state of New York actually changed the low pass option. They actually allowed kids to pass Regents exams at a lower rate. And so that was covered on the news, and so you really watched teachers start to get a little unnerved, that we're back in full session. We're trying to reset the expectations post, in a post-COVID world, and yet the state dropped that expectation. And so when they do that, you do start to hear the kids say things like, well, I only have to get this, right? Versus that the expectation that we all had for them, like honestly, all of us, is that all of our kids hit mastery with a lot of work and effort and, and our teachers putting that in. So last year, when you look at our local results, we definitely felt like, we, we felt that. We felt that in both the number of kids that needed that, that extra bump in order to get their, their Regents credit, and we noticed that in our local finals. So this year, you're really looking at the first year where kids did not have that sort of out. The state got rid of that, and we're back to normal. So when we're looking at the middle-level data right now, last year I didn't panic over it. This year, you are seeing a couple of areas where our failure rates are a little higher than we'd like to see them. In conversation with teachers, I think it's twofold. I think kids do the math, and they feel strongly that they, they did okay throughout the school year. And so the final, sort of a way of alleviating their stress is to feel like hitting mastery is not what they're after. So I think according to teachers, we not only need to drive that sort of culture and environment around what it means to be a champion, we probably need to incentivize some of that a little bit. So at the high school, you'll see teachers that might do like a, a champion wall, or if you get a one-hundred, they're gonna add your name to something. So we might need to start looking at that in terms of mastery rates at the middle level to try to encourage our kids to finish strong at the end of the school year. Teachers have also brainstormed a little bit around whether or not the assessments that they have created. A couple of years back, I would tell you, the, the exams at the middle level are more parallel tasks right now. So what I mean by that is, the expectation, let's say on an English Regents exam, is that you not only do reading comprehension, but that you're able to do short response, and that you're able to write extended essays. So right now, you're seeing that kind of work happening in sixth grade exam, the seventh grade exam, the eighth grade exam for ELA, which is slightly different than what they looked like in the past. So we've sort of increased that expectation of what it needs to look like at the end of the year. So now we're stepping into data sets where we wanna be looking at individual kids and how they performed at the end of the school year, and begin making decisions for them across the summer as we're planning. So Mrs. Mancuso has been charged as the guidance counselor, looking at seven go eight, and Ms. Curran as eight go nine, around kids who we probably need to flag and, and make sure that teachers know that they didn't quite finish that final exam strong, because as you know, a final exam, an eighth grade ELA, doesn't have the same teeth as when we get into that biology Regents. So finishing strong, learning how to study and focus is definitely something that we need to continue to champion. So both for celebrating it and making sure that kids know that it's important to us, and just helping teachers continue to set that culture of championship within inside our schools. So you'll see that. Moving into our Regents data, I will tell you that the championship concept is something that teachers across the middle and high school have been accustomed to. What I'm most proud of about this year's Regents results are the number of Regents exams where we did see our mastery rates go up pretty significantly. So I'd like to talk just a little bit about each exam this year. Algebra one was a new test, first time that it was given was in fact in June, so our kids took their Regents exam early June. I wanna say it was like June the fourth for that first round. It took us until literally June twenty-six to get our results back, while the state calibrated that assessment. Not every high school principal, middle high school principal in the region has entered their data, but I've mentioned to you all that as a high school principal group, we do work very well together. So we have a shared spreadsheet where we get, those of us that participate pretty heavily, we wanna see what we look like in comparison to each other. Our data set is inside that sheet where I'm able to see not just ours, but ours in comparison to others. There are two or three schools that I will benchmark us against in the region that we, we sort of look like. I run pretty head-to-head with one district that shall always remain nameless, and yet we chase after their achievement data with frequency. Right now, in terms of the Algebra one, even though it was a new exam, we are third in the region in terms of our passing rate. So even though we saw a little bit of a dip there with our new test, we are feeling pretty good about where, where we landed coming out of the gate. So Algebra two, you'll notice is, our mastery rate is actually up by sixteen percent. We often call the Algebra two the gatekeeper for the Regents with advanced designation. That is the hardest math Regents exam our students will take. Obviously, we offer APs and, and upper-level math, including calculus, so our kids will experience some more complicated assessments before they graduate from us, but that is a very challenging assessment. So to see our passing rate and our mastery rate increasing this year is fantastic. When those kiddos, those top performers are starting to perform back at the levels that we want, all boats will rise. So that's great to see. Our county results are holding. This is year two with a teacher there, so you'll take note that while our exam results are holding, we did see mastery rates increase by eleven percent. Earth science was a bit of a dip for us overall this year in comparison to last year. I will take this opportunity and thank Mr. Howell for his time with us. He had retired from Batavia City. We have been very grateful to have him holding steady for us while we tried to find a long-term solution in earth science. As Mr. Malasani said, we did have someone. I was going to welcome her publicly this evening, but I will hold off. ELA eleven is impressive for year two. We do have a new teacher in that particular course as well, so to see that percent passing increase by ten percent, and also your mastery levels to be as high as they are, was really exciting. Our mastery levels compared to the region looked really good. So congratulations there to Ms. Chapman for all her hard work. Geometry is also holding steady for us. Global Studies was up a little bit. Global Studies is a very hard exam for our kids. They do have to really understand other governments and government structures and other religions, and so you do find that it's not necessarily the most engaging content for every child. But we did see an increase in percent passing and a ten percent increase in mastery. But we did see an increase in percent passing and a 10% increase in mastery. I would like to publicly thank Mr. Okupovich for his service to our school district. He shall be missed. And last but not least, those living environment results increased by 14% in our overall passing rates this year from last year. And check that out, 30% increase in overall mastery. So we are definitely seeing progress in our Regents results as we continue to pull out of COVID, reset that championship expectation and keep moving our schools forward. Any questions?
Liz, did you?
No, anything that I was wondering, you covered, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
If you could pop the table, the board evaluation discussion, president can read that. So that's it for this evening. Here we have it in German, because we can't vote on it, so that's it for this evening.